Welcome everyone to the Leading Together Podcast Insights for Delaware's Tomorrow. In each episode, we sit down with top minds and leaders from across the nation. They share their perspectives in ways that help advance FSC's mission, which is building capacity, raising awareness, and elevating school board leadership across our communities. I'm Julia Kelleher, the Executive Director of First State Educate. And today's guests bring incredible perspective. It's one that you don't hear every day. CJ Cavan is a licensed attorney and one of the country's most credentialed parliamentarians. Parliamentarians being a very, very important topic in Delaware with the Roberts Rules of Water and the focus that we've had in some school board meetings. He serves as the Chief Parliamentarian for the Oklahoma House of Representatives. And he's advising more than 100 lawmakers and staff on legislative process and resolving conflicts on the floor. So I hope everyone's super excited because I'm thrilled about this conversation. But what makes CJ, I mean, there are a lot of things, but what's especially interesting is that he's also walked in the shoes of a local school board member. He served on the Luther Public School Board in Oklahoma, which gave him a front row seat to the challenges and opportunities that boards face in governing schools and serving communities. So now CJ runs his own law practice that's focused on professional meeting management and parliamentary services. But he continues to hold that leadership role with the National and State Parliamentary Association. So what I'm so excited about this conversation is that how CJ will show how lessons from Oklahoma's legislature and his time in the school boards can inform the work of any board anywhere in the country. So CJ, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm excited for this conversation.
Me too. All right, so you got to tell us, right? You've sat on both sides of the table. You've been a school board member, you're a chief parliamentarian, and you're advising an entire state legislature. So that's a pretty unique vantage point. Not everybody has done that. So what's that been like?
Well, it's certainly a unique experience. But one of the things for me that, whether it's a local school board or one of my clients or my legislative work, everything really boils down to relationships. Relationships are the most sort of important thing in all of those. And while I'm a rules and process guy, I think that's the most important thing is if we can follow the rules and we know what the process is, then we'll all be better off. But I think we've also got to balance that with what's the rules? What's the process? And what are the relationships that are as well? So that unique experience of working in the Capitol, but also going to school board meetings. You know, I got to hear the, you know, sort of high level policy discussions about, you know, why is the state or why is the legislature doing certain things? And I was a better informed school board member because of that. Because I could say, well, this was sort of the intent of these types of laws, of these types of pieces of legislation. And then I could turn around and share that perspective in my, in my day job as an active member of the school board and give that sort of insight that, you know, a lot of state legislators, legislators, legislators didn't have of, you know, what's the daily impact? What's this impact going to be every day in that school board? And so one sort of interesting note, you know, my school board, my school district that I served on the board for was largely off of our state's funding formula. Very complex funding formula based off of average daily attendance. But my school district was largely off of that because our ad valorem dollars exceeded sort of our need because we had a local power plant that generated a bunch of, a bunch of tax revenue. But what that meant was when mandated spending laws were passed, it often, it often didn't sort of carve out, you know, for those schools that were off the formula. So when we had a mandatory teacher pay raise, one of the years that I was on the school board, they put it through the formula. Well, for us, that meant that we had to find that money in our regular budget.
Yeah.
Instead of, instead of getting it through the formula. So it was just a cool, interesting perspective for me.
Were you reading up on the Delaware news? Because that like funding formula is all, all the talk these days. It is, you know, that pricing reassessments, whether they're going to change it to see how much is generated locally, what the state needs to actually put in. So did you know that or you just happened to say that?
I didn't know that. That's fantastic.
Yeah, really interesting. But it is a unique, it's a unique experience for a board that needs to lead under those conditions where they're, where it's not uniform for everybody, let's say.
Yeah, absolutely. And that makes it hard for, you know, my, my school district was rural, you know, fairly, about 1,000 students K through, K through 12. But those same challenges that, that big school districts have, little school districts have too. It's with a lot less resources. And then when it's sort of compounded with this funding formula, and however it's calculated, there's always going to be the question of, is this the right way to do it? And I think having those conversations, not just at the local school board level, but also at the state level is vitally important.
Yeah, I would agree. We had a Vision and Voices event, which, you know, our listeners are familiar with. In May, we brought together the newly elected school board individuals from, from their most recent election. The board leadership, so presidents and vice presidents invited superintendents as well as representatives and senators. And it was really the first time that all of those actors, who are really all trying to solve the same problem, right? From granted, from different perspectives and in different roles, so that we could build this, going back to your earlier point, build these relationships and how critically important that is. Because in order to work together, people need to trust each other.
Right, absolutely.
So you saw that, you saw that sort of play out. But it's kind of cool that you, you know, could go up and explain, this is what it looks like when you're implementing and then when you're trying to implement, say. This is what, this is what they intended.
Absolutely. And that sort of, you know, even though I, when I, when I came off the school board, still having that perspective of, you know, when we're passing laws, you know, Oklahoma has over 500 school districts. And when we're passing laws, the vast majority of those school districts are on that, are on that funding formula. There's only, it's been a minute since I've looked. I think there's only about 30 or less that are, you know, predominantly or exclusively off the formula. So when we pass laws, we generally think about it as, well, it's, it's all these schools on the formula. But having that sort of different perspective of, you know, not every school district is that way. And, you know, we need to make sure that we're thinking about when we're passing those laws, are we carving out those, those districts? Because otherwise, they're going to have to take, so again, with my teacher, when we, when we, when the state raised teacher salaries, that was almost a $500,000 hit to, to my district's budget. That we didn't get any, you know, if anything, we maybe got less than $60,000 in the funding formula to offset that cost. Well, for a school district.
That's good, 1%. That's good. I'm sure that helped.
It, 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 it did not help, but it also, you know, you know, when, when you've got a school district budget between $6 and $7 million, $500,000 is a huge amount of money.
Sure, 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 sure.
So, yeah.
So let's talk about the roles and responsibilities of school board members, right? I mean, they're individuals, right? But they're also part of a governing body. So what was your perspective on that? Kind of knowing your own roles and then your collective role?
Yeah, so this is one area that because of my sort of professional background in my day job, I had a, I had a different perspective than, than many of the people that I served with. And, and all of them were phenomenal people. They were there for the right reasons. They cared about the community and wanted to do the absolute best for our, for our school district. I took my approach, my approach was a bit different. Because, you know, for me, you know, as a school board member, you know, we had a couple of very important things that we had to do. District budget every year, you know, supervise the superintendent and then set policies for, for everyone else to go out and follow. It was never my opinion that our board or any board should necessarily be a micromanager. And I think a lot of school boards, this wasn't always true for mine, but a lot of school boards and a lot of school board members want to get into the granular detail on a, on a bunch of stuff. And for me, you know, I never wanted to talk about AstroTurf on the football field. Like, I just never wanted to talk about that. There was, now, if it was part of the budget, that's something we can discuss.
Right, right, right.
You know, something more specific, like the color of it, I didn't care. That was not a, that was not the best use of, in my opinion, the board's time. And so understanding, you know, a governance role and a policy selling role versus management. And, and that's something that I think not just school boards, but all boards struggle with is what's that line of sort of day-to-day supervision versus we're setting big policy, we're setting the big picture.
Yeah, it's a common thread. I mean, I appreciate you calling it out. And we're, we're developing training materials that, that do sort of focus on the difference between management and governance, right? Like what, and the board's role in setting those, the sort of, that big framework or? And, you know, that leads me to my, my next question, which is kind of like, if, if we assume the board sets governance policy, right? There's this overarching, the budget, approving the whole thing, you know, then they make, then issues come up in between, right? And, and so sometimes there's these charged moments when people want to go in direction A or direction B. And so what's making those decisions? If, again, zooming back out, the board's role is to set the policy, do the governance. But yet there are these instances where making a decision just becomes so charged. Is it the issue? Is it public pressure? Like what, how do we unpack that?
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's all of the above. One of the things that makes a school board, for me, so rewarding, but yet so challenging is it's my community. And it's not just my community, it's, you know, my kids and their future and the future of the kids that live around me. And I think, I think, I think you and I agree, I think your listeners would agree, that the most important thing we can do is educate tomorrow, is, is get our, is get our kids ready for being productive citizens in the future. At least that was always my, my perspective on the school board. And when you add that sort of passion to the mix, it becomes, it becomes a lot harder to make those types of, make those types of decisions. I always used this example when I served on a school board, and when I served on my school board, that, you know, the difference between serving on a school board is like practicing family law. It's, it's, it's passionate, it's charged, it's, it's oftentimes sort of some of the best and some of the worst moments of a, of a person's life. And when, when that issue comes before the school board, it's because they've exhausted almost every other option. And so that, that's what, that's what gets messy about it. And, you know, you add in the public pressure, you add in the fact that, you know, oftentimes it's a, it's a, it's a small community where everybody knows each other. There's not a lot of, not a lot of secrets in, in the community like that or? And, and that makes it hard to make those types of decisions because everyone is sort of, sort of invested in it. So you've got, you've got the fact that it's a kid or a minor. You've got the school district, you've got that, you know, is it setting a precedent for something else that we're doing? But you've also got sort of that, that dual role of, well, is it a problem with the school? Is it a problem with a teacher? Is it a problem with an administrator or a coach or a bus driver or whoever it is? And you got to balance that. And we always want to do what's right for, for, for the kids. That's why we're there. We've also got that dual role of, we've also got to do what's right for the school district too. And, and that's where, in my opinion, I always had a fiduciary duty to the school district, which is not, which is a separate entity. We got to, in having to think through what's right for the district may not be right or fair for that, for that, for that student. And what's the line? Sometimes, you know, sometimes students have, make, sometimes students and parents and administrators do stupid things sometimes, right? We know that. You know, I read the news sometimes. I mean, that happens. And the school board has to make an objective decision or as objective, as best objective as possible for the district, for the entire school system, not just what's best for that one student or that one teacher.
Yeah, it's definitely the systems approach helps. So that, this raises you to our, you know, I wanted to make sure I talked about the importance of asking questions too. So in this next segment, I'd really love to understand what, what, you know, you can't be an expert in everything. This is kind of the situation we were just talking about. But the, the importance of asking questions and how do you ask a question? How do you ask a question to make sure that you're gathering the right information? If you don't, you're not a technical expert. How do you keep other people from feeling threatened by the questions that you ask? All to get to the thing that you just mentioned is what's the best decision to make for the district?
Right. This is something that lots of boards, school boards, other boards struggle with. Because a lot of people feel like asking questions is pushing back. And, and that's not the case. You know, like you said, you know, when I was on the school board, I was not a subject matter expert in school administration. I brought a legal perspective, I brought a governance and policy perspective. But, but ultimately, I brought, I brought a perspective of, you know, I want to do what's right for the community, what's right for the district. But that doesn't mean that I understood every, in, in and out of every district policy or every district employee or, you know, every state law, despite my day job. I was probably more informed on that than others, but, but.
Even so.
But, but even so, that wasn't what I did every single day. And, and this is that really crucial difference between governance and management is, we had a really great, and they still do. Luther's still got a phenomenal superintendent. He was our subject matter expert. When I had questions about something they were asking me to vote on, I would ask. And, and, and it was really, really important for me. And I set this expectation when I, when I ran for school board. I got appointed when a vacancy occurred and then I ran for reelection. And when I was asked, you know, what would it be like serving with me? I said, well, I'm going to ask questions because I may not always know the answer. And, and for me, you know, I, and I, I want to talk more about prep in a minute. But, you know, when I prepped for, for those board meetings, I always wrote down, like, I don't understand this. Can I get more information? What more information did I need to make that decision? And I think a lot of board members either feel like, one, either don't do the prep, and again, I'll talk more about that, either don't do the prep or feel like if they ask questions, it's either pushing back, it's either saying, you know, being hostile or, or not a team player or something like that. Or they feel like it's going to make them look foolish. It's going to make them look like they didn't do what they needed to do. And so instead of, even if they've got a question, they won't ask because they don't want to look like they don't know what's going on. And my perspective was always, I wanted to have the most up-to-date, correct information to make a decision. And I think the best way that I can do my due diligence as a school board member is, is to ask those questions. And, and sometimes I would ask them in advance. I'd call the superintendent and say, hey, I got a question about this. I don't understand. Or I'd call the district treasurer and say, can you walk me through this before we get to the board meeting? Or I would ask it in the board meeting. I think both of those are, both of those are completely appropriate. Because otherwise, what's the point of getting together? These are meetings. And these are what Roberts would call deliberative assemblies. This is the very first, the very first chapter of the book is on deliberative assemblies. And these are groups of people coming together to have conversations, to make decisions. If that conversation didn't need to happen, what's the point of the meeting?
Right. And if it's not an informed conversation, because talking for the sake of talking without any connection to the actual matter at hand, that, that's counterproductive as well.
Right, absolutely. So I think asking questions was, other than voting, asking questions was the most important thing that I did as a school board member to ensure that not only did I have the right answers or the answers that I thought that I needed to make that decision, but also, you know, we've talked a little bit about that public pressure. You know, when you're on a school board, I couldn't go to the coffee shop or I couldn't go certainly to a local football game or, or anywhere without being, hey, why did you, you know, I heard the school board did this or the school board did that, like, what was that about? Well, if I don't have the right information, not only am I not making an informed decision, I'm also not able to turn around and educate my constituents on what that decision was too, particularly if it's controversial.
Yeah, no, I think that's really important too, to be able to. I was just talking actually to a superintendent earlier today and he expressed this similar thing, the importance of being able to walk someone through the logic of something. But I guess, and it's a rhetorical question, so I just, I guess I'm saying it more for the, for the listeners too, since I'm not sure it has an answer. But how did we get to a place where asking questions isn't a good thing? Like, to me, first of all, we, we, in some instances, like sort of value or prize curiosity, curiosity of thought, right? Like this inquisitive mind is something that is, is well-regarded, right? In our, in our culture and our society. But then also, like, I, for me, if I'm asking a question, it's in an effort to understand. If I really did not care what you were saying, I wouldn't ask.
Right.
Whatever they said, that's fine. I really don't need to or want to understand that. So to me, it's just, I don't know. I don't think it has an answer. But, but it's kind of, it's striking to me that questions aren't really as welcome as they should be.
Right. Well, and, and I completely agree. And I don't know that there's, you know, a, a single right answer. But I think part of it is, is it's harder than ever for people who disagree, whether that's politically or, you know, on any other issue, to have conversations. It, it's hard for us to disagree in a way where we can still have, have a decent and pleasant conversation. And, and one of the things that I love about sort of meeting governance and parliamentary procedure is setting that expectation that when I ask questions about something or when I debate something, there's lots of times when I was on a school board where I spoke out again, where I debated against doing something. Because I felt passionately about that. It's important to keep in mind, and this is one of the fundamental principles in Roberts Rules and in parliamentary procedure generally, is when we disagree or when we talk in meetings, we talk about issues, we talk about policies, we don't talk about people. And one of the things that is really difficult for a lot of people to do, I think, sort of in today's society, is separate policies and people. Just because I've got, you know, my best friend sometimes has really bad ideas. Sometimes people I don't like sometimes have really good ideas. And, and it's separating out, how do I feel about that person versus how do I feel about that policy? Or that decision you're asking me to do? And I think that more than anything else, certainly doing the training and, you know, asking questions and all of that is important. But I think for me, the most important thing that I, I like to tell people when they're getting elected to a board is keep an open mind. This is not about people or, or, you know, their personalities. This is about, is this a good idea or not? And surprisingly, even people that I don't like have good ideas sometimes. I'm sure that's true for you and your listeners as well.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But hopefully for your friend though, that if he has a bad idea, let him know before he goes out, right?
Absolutely.
Pulls the trigger.
Absolutely. And that's a good point is, you know, sometimes even, even my friends have, have bad ideas. I try to tell them that in advance.
Right.
Hey, you know, I'm not going to be with you. I mean, if you're going to do this, you know, I support your right to do it, but I'm not going to be with you.
Right, right.
And here's the reasons why.
Yeah, so it also speaks to, I think, you, this, this, the importance of this public deliberation. So you mentioned earlier, I don't know if you, there were other things you wanted to share about the importance of preparation and how much time it really does take. But really, I think an important topic that, that's worth calling attention to is the, what is this public deliberation and these tough conversations? Or this, you know, sort of consensus, reaching a consensus and speaking with one voice? Like, that's not an easy thing for boards to, to master, I don't think.
Well, I, I, I don't think it is either. I think, I think it's pretty difficult. And one of the things that I think makes that sort of harder is you have to do your work in public. You have to do your work in an, in an audience oftentimes. And sometimes that means somebody has walked in with a, with a, their, their phone or their camera system and they're recording it or they're broadcasting it, which I think is great. I think, I'm very pro transparency. I think all of that is great. But it also sort of doubles down on the fact that board members, when they come in, have to be prepared. You know, you have to, you know, take your packet, you know, go through it. I read mine line by line. You know, I had, I'm, I'm very extra. My superintendent would tell me this. I wanted it all as one PDF because I would mark it up on my iPad. You know, sit down, mark it all up, have a bunch of questions. And I would either email them in or give them a call. And when, you know, I would sort of set up at the board meeting and, you know, I had my notes of all the work that I had done. There were some times where some of the board members, you could tell this was the first time they ever looked at.
They were seeing it, yeah.
And, and for me, you know, I'm not a litigator. That's not what I, that's not what I chose to do in life. But I prepared for that like I was going to trial. You know, I knew as much of that material as, as possible in part because informed decision-making. I wanted to do that. I wanted to be able to ask questions. But I also wanted the public to know that, you know, they put their faith in me to serve on this board, that I was going to come to every meeting prepared. And if, and if I couldn't come prepared, you know, I would either ask, you know, is this something that we can talk about later when we have more time? Where I would try to get it moved to, to another meeting. But more, the most important thing is if you're going to sign up for one of these roles, if you're going to put your name out there, put your name on a ballot and get elected or whatever the process is, doing the work is important. And for every board meeting, you know, it's, it's not just the board meeting itself. There's all, there's, at least for me, there were several hours of work before every board meeting so that I could go in, have the conversations. Because the other thing is, you know, we do our work in public. I would get conversa, I would get phone calls or text messages from, from my neighbors or from my friends in the community and say, hey, what's this, what's this agenda item? Like, what does this mean? You know, you don't really get that on nonprofit boards or for-profit boards that you serve on. But because it's public dollars, you know, we do our work in public. You know, one of the things about parliamentary procedure that I've, that is, is hard to balance in public meetings is the rights of the members. Normally that means the members of the board. But in a public body, you've also got the rights of the public too. And the public also has a right to know because you're doing the work on their behalf. And I think that's important context to always keep in mind.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, the right of the public. Yeah, it is, it's not often discussed in those terms. So following along the, this theme, and in today's reality, any tips or tricks for how to keep the public deliberations, accepting that the preparation has to precede this conversation, right? But how to keep that public deliberation and these, this, you use the word debate, you know, what's being said and how the issue is being explored? Again, going back to what's best for the district because that's sort of the responsibility of the board. How do you keep it from becoming polarizing? Like today, it just seems like everything can become an issue that separates people. And if the board needs to reach consensus or make a decision as a body for what's best for the district, how do they do that?
Yeah, so I, I think there's, I have probably a few thoughts. One, I think it's setting the expectation that asking questions is not just okay, it's expected. And that we're not asking questions or we're not talking about an issue just because, there's, there's a purpose to that. The other thing that I, I think is important is, you know, oftentimes, and it was true on my school board, it was true in other boards I've worked with, we want decisions to be unanimous. And if they're not unanimous or near unanimous, we're willing to spend a whole bunch of extra time on something. Sometimes we just need to take the vote. Sometimes we just need to, you know, instead of spending, you know, two or three hours talking about this, we're, there's a lot of times, the point of the meeting is to persuade others. But there's a lot of times where we're not changing each other's mind. You can believe what you believe, I believe what I believe, this is what I think this decision will do. And sometimes we just need to take the vote. Because the more we fight about it, the more we discuss it, the more we sort of, you know, pick at the issue, the worse it gets. And the harder it is to work together on future issues. I can disagree, agree with people on this motion or this resolution or this policy. And, and, and you might never get me to change my mind on it. And that's okay. Let's take the vote, let's move on. But the more we focus on it and fight about it, the harder it is to, to do the work on other things in the future. Because now, every time we have a, we have a conversation, we have a disagreement, well, I'll, I'll always go back to, well, we had that one fight that one time, you know, five years ago. And, and our relationship's never been the same. Sometimes you just got to take the vote. And whatever the vote is, the vote is, and you move on.
And does that, does that responsibility for making that decision about when is, you know, when you're at the point of diminishing returns or it's becoming counterproductive? Is that, is that something that the board president is, kind of helps to navigate? Are there roles in the board structure where someone's responsible for safeguarding against that potential risk?
Yeah, well, the, the board president certainly has the role of facilitating that meeting, of, of processing, you know, the, the business in a way that's fair and procedurally accurate. But I think as, as for every board member, it's all of our sorts, sort, it's all of our obligations to ensure as smooth, as smooth of a meeting as possible. So for me, I think if we've gotten to a point where, you know, we're really not going to make, you know, any more headway, like people are locked up on what they believe, you know, I think it's completely okay to say, hey, you know, I, I think we all know what we believe on this. I, I move to closed debate. Under Roberts, call previous question, or I call the question. And then let's vote. You know, that, to close debate takes away a membership right, according to Roberts. Um, you know, that, to close debate takes away a membership right, um, according to, to Roberts. You know, we're going to vote on, do we want to close debate now? It's, it's not generally sort of unilateral.
Oh, I see, I see.
Does affect everybody. So I move to closed debate or I move the previous question. And if generally it's two thirds, if two thirds of the body, um, want to, want to close debate and vote immediately. You close debate and you just vote on the issue.
Yeah, it goes, it's fascinating, but this, it goes back to what you said at the very beginning, the rules, the process and the relationships. I mean, everything in that last example you just gave completely illustrated the point. I mean, those, the rules are there for, to safeguard the process and. And then that allows the relationships to not be harmed so that the board actually functions, you know, and can achieve the things that set out its objectives.
Absolutely. I've used, I've done that on more than one occasion to say, hey, listen, you know, you know, I, I think we've. We've, we've discussed this, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not, if anybody's got anything new to say, like, I think that's, I think that's important. But to me, it doesn't feel like any of us are persuading each other to change our mind. And the more we talk about this, the more personal it's going to get. So why don't we just, why don't we just take a vote on it?
Yeah, no, totally agree. CJ, thank you so much. This has been such an incredible conversation for me. I know our listeners, um, as well. I mean, just the, the, the fact that you have had this breadth of experience. And really what I, where I started, you know, you, you were in, you're at Oklahoma's legislature and you're in a local school board. That's not Delaware, yet everything that you said translates to what we're living today. So, you know, the. The, the roles of budget and evaluating the superintendent and policies, you know, you're not micromanaging. I think that's true. I think. It's true for Delaware too, that we're here to edu- we want to educate tomorrow and people are passionate about that. But that there is a fiduciary responsibility, that doesn't change no matter what state you're in or what school board you're in. I love that we talked about asking questions, you know, and the important, the expectation for preparation and to ask the question. And to talk about the policy and not the person to really separate it. So. I mean, you've just given us so much. This has been fabulous for me. I, I know I learned a lot and I'm, I'm deeply grateful. Thank you for sharing your perspective with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me. This is one of my favorite things to talk about, uh, cause I do have that perspective of being on a school board. I always joked, being on a school board was sort of the best job and the worst job I've ever had. Like, I saw the difference that it made every day. But those passions were there and it's just such a joy to share and I appreciate you having me.
Sure, of course, of course. I hope you come back. I hope you come back.
Yeah, absolutely.
So for those listening, if you want to dig deeper into some of the topics that we've talked about with CJ today, you can always visit our knowledge hub where we have a lot of resources and information that are aligned with these topics. And thank you for joining us for another episode. We'll see you next time.